I'll call roll from that end. And then by that time, James will be here. So I will call the roll at 6:34. Um, Clark, can you call the roll, please?
Mary Beth Scholl.
Here.
Isaiah Crowell.
Here.
Cindy Byting.
Here.
Gary Demaskey.
Here.
Talk slower.
James Portman is on his way. Mike Wagner.
I'm saying. I do have proof of posting. Please join me for the board of education meeting. There it is. See this in talk.
The United States to defy of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda. Isaiah?
Second.
Thanks, Gary. Any questions? Hearing none. James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll say yes. Do you have a motion to approve the board of education meeting minutes from June 6th?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, Isaiah and Mary Beth. Any questions? Hearing none. James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Do you have a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements as posted?
So moved.
Thank you, Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. James?
Stay.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
I'm staying.
We're okay. That's why I was counting. Mary Beth?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Um, public input, we don't have any, um, president, um, more present. Um, I do just want to set a reminder, I will be out on the 25th. I'm actually leaving Friday. So excited. So I'll be on vacation. James will be running the meeting, um, on the 25th, but I leave very quickly. Uh, but then I also wanted to say, school is over. I think it was a great year for everybody. We had some great, um, athletics and still going great. Good luck to them. Um, graduation was very good. They put on a great show and congratulations to all of those seniors. That's all I have to say. Mr. Jordan?
Cheryl.
Or Cheryl.
Quick reports tonight.
Yeah.
Floor is yours.
You can't fight over who goes first now.
No, I never do. Cause mine's short. So you can see, I've been busy processing claims, which is end of the year. Get everything done. Try to tie things up. Some of them, we still have to do more just because of final payrolls and stuff like that. But, um, taking care of those is, we need to. Um, DPI reports. Um, we had to have food service contract for each of our locations completed to DPI. So that's, um, complete. Just continue to review the 17, 18 budget and also working in the 18, 19 budget. Um, we did on the May early release, have a wellness day. And during that day, we also had a presentation from our 403B administrator and also our flex account, broker. And we didn't have a lot of participation, which it was gorgeous outside. Who wouldn't want to go outside versus sit in the meeting? Um, but to this point, I think we have had quite a few people sign up for the flex plan. So hopefully, I mean, it helps them when they do that. I received a closing letter from our food service audit. And then there is a list of grants, um, some that we know that we've received and some that have been applied for that we're just waiting for responses. Any questions?
Anybody else?
Sorry, keep you locked out.
Special invitation only. Any other questions for Cheryl? All right. So, Becky, please?
Yep. Just a couple of quick things I want to touch on. Just from my meeting list, a few, there was a lot of them. When you have this month break, it turns into a lot of different encounters with people, planned encounters, I should say. Ed O'Connor and Elizabeth Freeman worked with us, Strangness, here in our school improvement planning, through CISA 2. And that was actually one thing that Dale referenced in his, uh, report. It was progress that the students made at MAZO, um, now relative to our school improvement plan, which, um, those numbers, I just want to make that connection for you cause you probably don't have a lot of context, cause you have no reason to have context for most of you. Those numbers that Dale had in his report relative to that goal, uh, the fact that 130 out of 149 kids showed growth in reading, um, you may say, well, shouldn't it be 100%? Perhaps. Uh, but the fact that that test is a one-day snapshot of where they're at, the fact that 87.2% of the kids at MAZO showed improvement on that one-day snapshot. Having done the MAP test as a principal in the last district, that's very good. And then I would say even more powerful than that, this projected growth goal, 80% of the kids met their projected growth goal, that's even more phenomenal than the fact that 87% grew. And it's actually, it's harder for kids that have high scores to grow because they're already at or above like the national norms. For them to demonstrate and to meet their growth goal, that is, uh, that takes some significant effort on their part and their teacher's part. So I just wanted to make that connection for you because the school improvement planning this year was our first kick at the cat. I thought it went pretty well. And this is, I would, no. I'm allergic. I just want to, uh, point out the fact that, I mean, this is just a tangible example of what that school improvement planning was. Our partnership with Ed and Elizabeth was positive. They were helpful. It was nice to have, um, that external voice that could reinforce the internal voices, if you will. So we're going to continue that next year. Uh, we already have a date set in August to, uh, have our second annual school improvement planning day. And we'll set a goal like this next year. Each of the buildings will. But I just wanted to point that out because I think that is good to actually see evidence of something happening, um, and working. And the data was good, so we always like to point it out when the data is good.
Well, and you always talk about, you know, you, you mentioned that snapshot in time. And you have to look at, every child goes through so much in their life. And who knows what was happening on that day for them? Not only how much they've learned, but, you know, what is going on in their life in that case? I mean, 87%.
So when you look at that number and then consider all of the things that happened in the school throughout the year, you know, all of the distractions, good and bad, that is pretty remarkable. So a celebration.
Yeah.
Couple of other ones, Drew Hawick, we had a, a good conversation, uh, just to follow up to the future search. He wondered kind of where we're at, what we have done. I shared with him that, um, document that I had made shortly thereafter, that spreadsheet that kind of talked about some strategic directions and the feedback. I mentioned that we have a day planned in July to kind of take the next step as a board and then with the admin. Um, so that was, that was a good conversation, uh, affirming if nothing else that, you know, we're on the right path once again. Um, he was very complimentary about how our three days went and was very impressed with our turnout and those things. So I just wanted to share that. Uh, Dr. Hartwig, um, worked with us this year in that security health, um, best. That's the, uh, social emotional health screener. Um, we got the grant through security help this year and we're able to do that at the elementary schools. Uh, the grant is going to be available again next year. I think I have an in on that one, so I'm confident we'll get it again. And it was, that was just a good first step for us, uh, this year to get started with that, to kind of get that in the forefront for people, the things we've talked about, you know, student mental health and what does our program look like? The fact that we're going to have a social worker next year. I think we're, we're starting to take some good steps and we'll have to continue that good work. But I just wanted to share that I had a good conversation with him and good news, the grant is going to be available again next year. So. And then last one, uh, last Friday, Dane County Superintendent's got together, talked about this county consortium that we're going to have around the concept of equity. Actually just got a mailer from WASB today, uh, talking about, uh, more emphasis being put on schools and what their programs are and how they demonstrate equity in their schools. Uh, so that was good timing. So we actually have a date planned where each, uh, district is going to be represented by two people to kind of do the kickoff to what is this going to be, uh, for next year. And then one other thing I wanted to share with you, um, we had a rep there from WASDA, John Bales came and talked about, uh, they're piloting with Dane County. They want to come in and offer an opportunity for district administrators and then as many board members as possible will attend, can attend. And just kind of talk about, some of the things we talked about, um, you know, drawing, uh, Bob Butler, when he talked about kind of board roles and responsibilities and kind of what, what does the good work of a board look like? WASDA's actually looking to put together, and the reason they're coming to us is we're going to kind of be their guinea pigs to pilot their program around, uh, developing administrators together with their boards. Um, so right now they're looking at two dates. We would only be signed up for one, so August 10th or 13th. I didn't get the mailer yet from John, um, but really what the intention would be is to set up, uh, they would have some speakers, some people there to work with us, to talk to us. And then we could potentially after that date, if we wanted to kind of sign on or get into some further development and work, we would be able to do that. If we just said, you know what, one thing we identified during our day was, we need a little help with this, they would then facilitate getting you that help. So seems to be pretty, uh, like a pretty neat opportunity to me. Something that I think we could benefit from. And this first one, because we're the pilot, uh, I've been led to believe is a freebie, so.
Well, the 13th is a board meeting, right? Stack it on it.
Parlay it into that.
Yeah.
So, once I get more information from WASDA, I'll share with you guys, but I just wanted to give that in front of you. And then Cheryl had in her report, the, uh, school safety grant. Worked with James a little bit, uh, worked with the deputies from the Dane County Sheriff's Department. We submitted our grant, uh, last Thursday, so one day free and clear of the deadline. So that was an accomplishment. Roughly $63,000 worth of work potentially. I was told on Friday at the Dane County Superintendent's meeting, so long as you checked all the boxes and, and filled out that grant appropriately, it does look pretty promising for the funding. Evidently, the DOJ is getting a lot of heat to administer, meaning the state won't be happy if they don't administer properly and give out the grant. Um, so stay tuned. But that was the message Friday was, if you check the boxes, it looks promising.
Did you check the boxes?
I hope so. I let Cheryl look at it. I stared at those screens for hours.
Yeah.
So I'm hopeful. But yeah, so a variety of different things, um, with entrances, with safety film on windows, uh, radio system for the school districts so we can communicate real time between all three buildings. Some further training, uh, with trauma-informed education analysis training. So, yeah, $63,000 is what we ended up submitting. Keep it posted. Any questions relative to, uh, the meeting list or anything else?
I have a question about, um, I saw WASB posted a grant about teacher training. Did you see that one? Like for teacher training development grants?
Is it the teach?
Did it pertain to anyone?
Is it the teach grant?
The what?
The teach grant?
I don't know. It's through the, um, Department of Workforce Development. We can talk about it later. I didn't know if it was from the on the floor.
Order to me.
Okay.
We did apply, Cheryl mentioned the teach grant. That's, uh, technology. We did apply and we got that. We just don't know the exact dollar amount yet, unless you've heard.
We do for the, the infrastructure.
Yep, the infrastructure.
I want to say it's 30,008, 48. But we also have the teach grant for teacher training that we applied for as well through a consortium with CISA 2. Right?
Yep, yep. So that one was about $7,000. And that would be for teacher training on technology. And then one other thing I'll just mention is, CISA 2 is picking up this new teacher project, which is you provide, you train a mentor teacher in each building. And then they, um, really become the cornerstones of your new staff induction program. It's very substantial development for your staff members internally. Eight days, actually, even a year of development. So it would be a huge step up for our induction program. I'll just leave that at that. Um, so we're working on that right now, uh, through CISA 2. And they put together a consortium and went to a meeting for that a couple of weeks ago. There was actually a representative from the new teacher project. The data on that is phenomenal. Um, if you implement that program with your staff, fidelity, everyone likes that word, but fidelity, the gains, two to three months of student learning, and that's what I like, the data's about students, not about the guns. Uh, two to three months of additional student learning for teachers that participated in that project versus teachers that did not. So to me, that's, uh, that's substantial. So excited to be a part of that potentially.
This one is through, um, Wisconsin Fast Forward Grants.
Order to me. Cheryl has told me we're slightly more aggressive in grants lately.
It's a good thing. It is not a bad thing.
It is a good thing.
She loves creating all those other balances.
But you have to have the same verbiage all the time, cause if somebody calls a grant something and then somebody else calls it something else, I'm like, wait a second, do I know about this grant? Cause that's one thing I've said all year is, if you're applying for a grant, let me know. Because if we get the grant, I'm probably going to be the responsible party to finish the grant out. So I'd like to be kept in the loop. So with the grants, it's more difficult to keep track of all of them when you have multiples. So I've just been making a file for every one of them to.
See everything.
But it is wonderful if we get the grants, uh, more money to put towards the education.
Any other questions to follow?
All righty.
Um, do you want me to talk about the cosmetic committee?
That is next on committee reports.
Oh, well, it's not really a committee yet.
Well, but we, so yeah, so part of the committee reports. So first on, on our agenda, employee relations, um, James, do you want to say that we met? Do you want to say anything?
Sure. I mean, we met with, uh, the administrators and just talked about contracts and some of the things that we might be able to do to make the contracts more consistent to more of the administrators. And it was pretty good talk. We find in having more talk in the future.
Sounds good. So yes, so then in cosmetic committee, so just kind of a follow-up from the May and just kind of getting a feel for what everybody thinks about.
Well, um, Cindy had just called me and kind of said that she was thinking of maybe including board members and admin on this committee and then going from there. Um, I kind of had a more broad, I guess, stance on, um, inclusion and kind of not your standard hierarchy with this, just being way more informal, um, and involving staff and community members kind of in this. I think that has been one of the frustrations is that it's hard to, to get things done inside the buildings. From the people I've talked to, it's like, you know, one tedious little change in the bathrooms has to go through a chain of command. And it's kind of like, can we just, um, artistically and creatively come together and make some, you know, obviously we have the, the final say of things and the admin have a say in their schools. But, um, I thought in terms of creativity of being a little bit more open-ended than just the admin and the board working on that. So I guess it's, we need to have a discussion on what others feel is appropriate.
So I, I know I talked to a few of you guys, um, kind of on the phone, just kind of getting your ideas. And it was, you know, mentioned to maybe be part of the facilities and transportation, making sure that Bill is involved.
Building and grounds.
Yes, sorry. Well, building and grounds, yes. That's facilities and trims. Yeah, that's what we, I was like, that's what it is. Yeah, so yes, so facilities, building grounds, yes. Um, so that was kind of one of the thoughts, was to kind of make it as a subcommittee. Um, you know, and, and just to kind of make sure that admin's aware, Bill's aware, everything that's going to be going on, that, you know, is going to be approved and, and is viable for the everyday work of our students. So and I, you know, and talking to Barb, it sounds like, you know, she, you know, was looking for more of a teacher collaboration, looking like, you know, maybe even, I think you say committee, or community members, if they want to come in, things like that. So we just need to know what should we do from here?
But if you got motivated people that want to help, it's a good idea. There's always good ideas out there. I don't think you have that, and as long as everything's approved, kind of goes through approval process. So something small, I mean, can, uh.
Who's, who do you think should approve that?
Well, the principal probably. Is there any other ones?
I mean, I don't disagree that, uh, and I think that's obvious that the final say is going to be at that level. But in terms of brainstorming and ideas, I don't necessarily think that we can't, like it has to be the board and the admin doing that.
No, 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 I think you're right.
No, I know, but that was what, I mean, to me, it's, I think it's a lot more wide open. And we just say, hey, we want to do some updates. Who has ideas? Come together, kind of be free flow. And then obviously bring that back to, to kind of people and present it then. And so I don't know if the buildings and grounds committee is like the after. I mean, if they want to be included on it.
Like the clearing her, per city?
But, yeah. But I, I don't know if it, I guess my vision or my scope of it is beyond just us saying, oh, that color really bled them off, you know? So I want, I want it to succeed and not just be.
So you want to, you've already got a what? I mean, approve.
Right. And I do have people interested, but it's aside from the board and admin. But what Cindy was saying is that, is that okay? Or should it be at the committee level, at our level? That's what we're looking for in both right now.
The other thing I want to clarify, just so we're all on the same page, is finance for this? So would this be something that was purely at grassroots? Or we're bringing in the stuff? We're bringing the pain? We're bringing the whatever to you? Or providing that somehow? You know what I mean? Just because that'll be the next question.
Yeah.
We'll have a really good idea.
That's the intent.
And everyone's going to look at each other and say, all these. All right.
Right.
So I mean, the intent would be is that these would be creative ideas, things that come from this, this group that's just interested in climate, culture, beautification.
Right.
And then that that group would, I guess to me, the natural would be, uh, the principal and Bill. I think at the very least, you know, so say you're, say you have three ideas for this building. You want to do A, B, and C. Okay. Share that proposal, whatever you want to call it. It doesn't have to be formal, but I mean, at least, at least come to those two people and say, yes, here's what we're hoping to do. Here's when we're going to do it. We got the supplies. We got the people. And at least have that. The biggest hesitation, you know, from my perspective, isn't to stifle the creativity or the energy or the positivity. Quite the opposite. I just don't want, uh, something to happen so quickly or without the knowledge of the person that, that is then going to have to answer to whatever it is that happened. So if you replace the mural with another lovely mural and the questions come to Liz Dostal in July, who did this and what, what, what? Well, Liz better at least have an idea and know what's going on. We had some really awesome people that showed up and did it.
Well, and you laughed at my cosmetic committee, but that was the only, like, I, I figured I had to come up with a name because as informal as it sounds, like I understand it is a formality. So I, and I know I told you guys, I don't expect anybody to put, I mean, this is just as much or as little as anybody wants. And I understand kind of the undertaking and it is a formality. So there will be a committee of sorts of the people that we acquire. And then there will be tours at the buildings, instruction, presentations, that kind of stuff. So it's not just like a, hey, I'm just going to go grab 10 people and you're going to show up and there's some paint on the wall. But I think it's something when, when you get people inside the schools that come that are already motivated. It's like, you know, support and run with it.
The other thing that I just want to throw out there, cause I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Um, you know, people are very good intentioned and they may not always have the skills. So they may come with a great paintbrush and idea. And so I think we just need to be really clear of, there may be some cleanup work. There may be some touch-up work. You know, I think, you know, we want it to be quality work as well. You know, I guess that's, I, I don't know how to say that. I don't know.
It will be.
You know?
It's not like I'm wrong in that sense of fifth grade.
So, well, you know what, though? Bill and I.
And you know what? They have painted the wall and it looks good too.
So, cause Bill and I painted the, um, MAZO pool hall, I think it was like four years ago. And we asked for help. Very few people showed up. And let me tell you, the ones that did, we ended up having to redo it and they were reducted. Um, you know, so, you know, I just, that, that's just a point that I want to put out there that, you know.
Okay, so what do, what do we do about that?
I, I don't know. I don't know. But I just think it's something that is kind of in the back of your head. Yeah.
And that's why you go through a promo process and market processes, like how they're going to get it done.
Yeah.
What's going to be the follow-up?
Right.
Maybe it's not. But I understand that concern. It's not going to be any by numbers.
All right. So I guess if we're hearing it right, Barbara, you want to then?
Yeah, so I thought I would just email, um, the district staff first, who was interested in the inside. And then kind of branch out and see, um, from there. You can be, I'll forward any emails, of course, so everybody's able to, um, keep in contact about it.
All right. All right. Do we have a 5-1, Jordan?
We do not.
All right. So striking 5-1, um, moving to 5-2. Do I have a motion to hire Tyler, Tyre Ballwick as assistant high school boys basketball coach for the 18, 19 season with a stipend of $2,400?
So moved. I'll say again.
Thanks, Isaiah and James. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. James?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Do you have a motion to, um?
Just information.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, just wanted to keep.
Oh, the student teacher, perfect.
Student teacher. Talked in the past, we're trying to be a little more welcoming.
This is great. Yeah.
We're working on it. So I just wanted to share that with you. It was information only.
All right. 6-1, um, discuss possible action to work with school perceptions on community service projects.
And this is basically from our work with, uh, uh.
Performance.
Performance.
No, no, no. The, um, like this is kind of a follow-up for part of our work, what was it called?
Future search.
Future search. Yeah. So this is kind of holding all of that.
Well, it's a, yeah. So yep, so we worked with future search. We determined things that they wanted as their priorities. One of them mean buildings, potentially one site, changes in it, whatever. So then we had, that's the number one I came to go. Jordan, what's the name of their company?
Performance Services.
Performance Services then did the facility search, or the facility review. And now school perceptions will come in and say, all right, based on all this information, we're going to go talk to the community. Let's get the perceptions of the community. What would they support in referendums? Did I say that?
Yeah, so a couple of key things here. We'd be looking late summer, early fall in terms of seeking the feedback. And really the, the two main parts, and this is a playoff of the future search and the facility study. The two main parts would really be regarding our operational referendum. Because part of our future financial success is the operational referendum. Then the other piece that, um, we need to explore a little bit is the timeline of that referendum. A two or three or four or five, something like that. Because a two-year will make it nearly impossible for us to ever address our facilities. Because that would be three years of referendum in a row, um, which I don't think anyone wants A two or three or four or five, something like that, because a two-year, um, will make it nearly impossible for us to ever address our facilities, um, because that would be three years of referendum in a row, um, which I don't think anyone wants, nor is that smart. So that'd be the one piece is teasing out some information about the operational referendum. And then the second piece is, yes, about the facilities, how do people really feel about that? You know, we got the feedback of ninety-two individuals during the future search. This would be, everyone would have an opportunity to go to the district. What are they willing to support, how do they feel about it? If you looked at all the information from school perceptions, you may have, at this point, they're pretty much the gold standard in this area. And their data to me, um, if you're, if you're all about data when you make decisions, uh, when I, when I read a number like forty for forty on, uh, predicting referendums based on using their data, um, that's hard to, uh, hard to discredit that data. And neighboring districts have used them. I've spoken to many people who've talked very highly, coming off the future search, uh, when I talked to Drew and people from WASD, they said, you really need to talk to Bill Foster, who's the guy that owns school perceptions, about this is a logical next step for you to, to really wrap your head around, what are you able to do? Um, so with your support to work with school perceptions, I would, uh, be contacting Bill and our work would probably start basically immediately on putting together what our survey is gonna look like. Another piece that comes from this, um, that is a district benefit, is it's very clear communication and it tends to be very positive district communication. You, you articulate things and share things with the community that perhaps they had heard, but they didn't really internalize, and now they get to see the information in front of them in a pretty clear, concise, and positive way. So I, I would not have advocated, would not advocate for this, but I think with where we're at with the referendum and with things that came up with the future search, I feel like, uh, proof's in the pudding. If we wanna go into our referendums in the next couple of years with the information we need to be successful, this is our next step.
Yeah, I spoke to a few people on the CISA board as well as a few people, other board members, and they, who have used the school perception, and they've really found it beneficial, they've really thought that they were great, easy to work with, great to work with, so. They said definitely would work with them again. With that, do I have a motion to work with school perceptions?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Gary and Mary Beth. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, James?
Yes.
Barbara? Yes. Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth? Yes. I'll say yes. Uh, do you have a motion to approve the federal funds procedure manual? Oh, no. Say something about that before we do, cause I was trying to, uh, it was very exciting to read through, but I was trying to, I really was.
What it is, is mandated by the state, you have to have a procedures manual on how you deal with, like, if they're purchased with federal funds. So that's why we put it in place, we need you guys to approve it, because that will be part of what the auditors ask for next month.
Perfect. With that, do I have a motion?
So, sorry.
Thanks, Isaiah and Gary, any other questions? Hearing none, James?
Yes.
Barbara? Yes. Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah? Mary Beth? I'll say yes as well. All right. Do I have a motion to approve seven point one and seven point two?
So.
Thank you, Isaiah, do I have a second? Thank you, Mary Beth. Any other questions, discussion? I, this is such a great opportunity to continue our collaboration.
As far as seven point two, though, we're not, football's exempt from that, right? I can't read it, I'm sorry. Sorry, say that again.
It's track and field cross-country soccer.
Oh, seven two exactly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're in that. It's WIA, it's WIA, but it's just, okay. We're just exempt for the tournament.
Oh, that's.
We're penalized for being part of a group.
You tried.
Yeah. I, I would say the eight-player football thing in relative to us being considered for the tournament, I mean, that, that was pretty resumely known. I did follow up and at least tried to mend the fence a little bit, and I think we talked about this before, cause the initial response.
Did they, did you get a call back after the board met about it?
Relative to the WIA or? Yeah.
That committee?
Yeah, so, I mean, the response was, there's no, no interest whatsoever nor whatever inclination to explore any difference other than two-hundred is the limit. There's rumors that Division Seven may just, in the next couple of years, that might just be the eight-man football division. Now, I think that would still have an enrollment number on it, so I don't know that that does us a whole lot of good. So, uh, yeah, relative to what is that at this point, I would say the next two years is, is status quo, we play eight-man, but we're not in the, the WIA tournament or whatever it looks like for eight-man. And then we just need to continue to, to evaluate where our numbers are at, how we feel about the program, student safety. The other rumbling that's out there relative to football right now is the possibility of district football, which has come up in the past, and one year they thought they were gonna do it and then that all flopped, uh, because of travel. So with district football, it's basically football-only conferences based on enrollment. So they try to find the schools closest to you, um, in geography and then the tightest range of enrollments. The thought being that that would be more equitable, uh, in terms of safety and competitiveness. When it fell flat years ago was because travel ended up getting crazy for schools from up north, because to find seven other schools with the same tight enrollment band, I mean, there was like three-hour trips. Now their argument was, well, it's football only and it's only one trip every other year, but that's kind of gaining traction again, because football drives realignment for everything. So the problem is you end up having football, kinda makes a mess, and now you're left looking for a new conference for twelve sports when really your only problem is football. So.
They did update the football only, at least for the southern part of Wisconsin.
Yep, so southwest Wisconsin did end up with the football only, and that's really what it's been recently, is a lot of football-only conferences have actually started to kind of form. But there's, uh, the South Central Conference, which is like Wisconsin Dells, Moston, Westfield, uh, Watoma, but then it goes as far north as Nikusa, which is basically Wisconsin Rapids. That conference is basically, as I understand it, dissolving, which that could all end up trickling in, believe it or not, to us, because the Dells is involved and we're close enough and they could, with the Badger and the Capital, like, all the dominos, and that's the other piece, it's all a domino. One moves and then three conferences get touched. So, so yes, I did follow up after our meeting, I did talk to them again after they had their meeting, and really the response was, we understand your concern, but there's no real, I don't think even consideration at this point. Even for some sort of waiver, cause I talked about the possibility of could be demonstrate, the fact that we offer soccer, the fact that we have, you know, a great percent of our boys are out for A-sport. The difference is we have more options than most schools our size, but that didn't even really seem to, uh, strike a chord. So, so to me, it's, uh, we're, we're at a demand for two years again, and we continue to try to build the success of the program and get kids excited about it and see where we stand a couple of years from now and see where the state's at at that point. I don't see any immediate relief to the tournament, please.
All right. Well, with that, James?
Yes.
Barbara? Yes. Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth? Yes. Um, any committee or other board meeting dates? Um, I think we're probably at the right now. Um, the board meeting dates are set as is. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to the Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five, current C-one, current CC, for the consideration of employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or this exercises responsibility? When the executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned.
So who guys said it?
Thanks, Isaiah.
Second.
Thank you. Gary? Questions? Hi, uh, James?
Yes.
Barbara? Yes. Gary?
Yes.
Isaiah? Mary Beth? I'll say yes as well. Thank you.